We're back in session, just to let you know. We had an executive session which just ended. And so we've already banged the gavel and called road and all that stuff. So we'll just jump right in. Dr. Dixon, are you set?
Yes, I'm all set. So, thank you all. Tonight for our work session, we have the equity team. And I'll introduce them in just a second. Well, I'm Dr. Womack. He's Dr. Womack now. He's finished defending his dissertation last month.
Congratulations.
So, last fall, the board approved our educational equity policy. And part of that policy, we, there were some statements that we talked about. In order to achieve equity for our students, the board would establish the following goals. And under your policy, section D, it states that the district shall develop an equity analysis tool and use this tool to review existing policies, programs, professional development, and procedures to ensure the promotion of equity in all applicable new policies, programs, and procedures. And I asked the board if we can come back in the spring of this year to present that tool to you. So tonight, Dr. Womack and his team will present the equity tool, analysis tool, to the board. Okay? All right. Turn it over to you, Dr. Womack, and your team.
Thank you, Dr. Dixon. First of all, I'd like to introduce my equity team leaders. We call them team leaders. A couple of them have been working with me since last year when we were coming together with a strategic plan goal number two. But my equity team leaders are: Dr. Talisa Dixon, our superintendent. Thank you so much for giving us the time and the resources to put this together. Joyce Bukovich, who is the head of the math department at Cleveland Heights University High School. Rachel Coleman, principal at Noble Elementary School, who's been a part of this work. Dr. Taryn Ford, who's unable to make it tonight, professor at John Carroll University. Krista Hathorn, Executive Director of Reaching Heights, who's unable to attend tonight. Lisa Hunt, our parent engagement specialist from Cleveland Heights University Heights. Dr. Michael Jenkins, unable to make it tonight, the principal at Roxboro Elementary School. James Max Kravitz, intervention specialist, recently joining the team. I'm doing a phenomenal job. Thank you very much, Max. Needed you. Cheryl Walt, STEAM educator at Boulevard Elementary School. And Shawn Washington, who was a part of MSAN, Abbott, Cleveland Heights High School, and was one of the original members along with Joyce Bukovich, putting this equity team together. So, thank you for everybody.
Melissa.
Oh, and I'm sorry. Melissa Strathfam shouldn't write next to me. Thank you, who makes all of this work. She crosses the team with eyes. So, once we started this work, the team was able to go to Roots Town and to the Social Justice Institute. And through that work at the Social Justice Institute in Roots Town, we had a chance to meet with individuals from MSAN, Madison, Wisconsin, and other areas who helped us to develop what they call the four cornerstones of equity. And the four cornerstone approach deal with four specific areas. A focus on equity, which deals with self, talking about a history of marginalization and current models. So, in cornerstone one, what we're really trying to do is focus on self-identity and also looking at this history of marginalization. In cornerstone two, what we tried to do is look at grades, scheduling, the way we develop our schemes in school and how it impacts students and staff. Cornerstone three talks about transforming teaching and learning, which is where we start to get into the universal design for learning concepts. And cornerstone four, which we went on the accelerated path in Cleveland Heights High School, excuse me, Cleveland Heights University Heights has already developed, was leveraging policy and funding. We have the policy in place. Now, we're trying to make sure that we have the funding in order to continue with this work. One of the things that we learned at the Social Justice Institute, as well as the trainings at the ESC, is equity is not always equal. It is basically meeting people where they're at in order to accomplish specific goals. And we use this to dramatize that. This is a slide from Dr. Roger Cleveland, but is used in quite a bit of equity work throughout the nation.
Okay, so we're going to do an activity with you that we do at our first training. So, we're asking you to play along. So, the first thing I'd like you to do is put down your writing utensils. Okay. I'm going to show you a list of words. We didn't give you the PowerPoint yet for that reason. So, if you're wondering why, you'll get one. It's coming. We're going to show you a list of words, and you're going to have 10 seconds to memorize them. After that 10 seconds over, I'll take the words off the screen, and you'll be able to write down everything that you remember. Questions about the directions? I'm in teacher mode, I'm sorry. Okay. Here we go. You got 10 seconds. Write down every word you remember. Are we ready? Got another one? Anything else you remember, write it down. Okay. So, who has pillow? Okay, so that's a good majority of people. Who has bed? Oh, that one was a good one. Yeah, that was a good one. Who has sleep? Okay, so we're almost at half there. Okay, so I'm going to put the list back up. And as you can see, the word sleep is not on there. So, Scott. So, this is an activity that we use to start with, to kind of set a tone, so...
And one of the reasons that we start off with this activity, this is a very simple icebreaker that we use in order to get people to feel what we call psychologically safe enough to understand how we take information and we construct it into silos. And a lot of those silos are based on our past experiences, based on our beliefs, or the base, on the way that we remember information. And we remember information what's called mental models. And those mental models have a way of being based on our past experiences. They serve as filters through which we observe, interpret, and respond to the world. They shape what we see and hear, what we feel, and what we do. But they also have an impact in regards to stereotypes, because we construct silos in order to contain information, and it impacts our mental mindsets. But this is an activity we do when we're working on cornerstone one, which is about a history of marginalization and focusing on equity.
So, as we would begin any classroom, we are going to begin with some goals. It is our hope by the time you leave today's session that you can answer the following four questions. What is the LEED tool? Why did we choose it? How are we using it? And what is our five-year plan? As Dr. Dixon already went over, this is Board Policy 4122 and 300, Section D.
Wow, math teacher.
I'm going to say that's a math teacher.
Right, 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 right.
District shall develop an existing tool for new and existing policies, programs, professional development, and procedures to ensure the promotion of equality and equity.
Good evening, everyone. So, we're going to start with what is the LEED tool? LEED is an acronym for Leadership for Equity Assessment and Development Tool. It is a professional growth tool designed to support leadership teams. It is based on 10 research-based equitable practices rubrics. Each equitable practice has four levels of implementation, and we will look at that in just a minute. Created by Oregon Leadership Network at Education Northwest and adopted by equity practitioners So, in front of you, you will see that there, the alignment is posted on the screen as it relates to how it aligns to the board equity goals A through F and our strategic plan goals 1 through 5. So, this tool ensures that each construct addresses one or more of our goals, so we know that we are measuring what we are, one of our goals.
No, I said, Ms. Hunt is passing out the PowerPoint now that we're going through the first activity, so you don't know the answer.
We're on slide 14.
Slide 14. Thank you. So, you also, in front of you, have a copy of the LEED tool, and each one of those 10 constructs are in that packet. This is an example of one of the constructs or practices that we have focused on this year. It is engaging in self-reflection and growth for equity. And as we began to examine our work, we use this rubric to be like a formative assessment to guide where we are and where we want to go. And we'll revisit it frequently, so we can see where we are on the continuum. So, it's kind of like a rubric that you would use in your classroom. Beyond the, on the left, it's little or no equitable practice, emerging, proficient, and exemplary. And just different words for each one of those columns can change where we are on that continuum. For example, if you look at that first one, it says, "Leadership does not have an existing plan." And then for the emerging, it's, "Leadership has a plan to further develop awareness and knowledge." For proficient, it's, "Leadership makes equity a central focus." And for exemplary, leadership prioritizes the work. So, those words will guide where we are, and we can use our evidence to see where we are and continue to look at our practice as we go along.
Now, as to the why, we are suggesting the LEED tool. It starts dialogue and sustains action in expanding educational opportunities, improving school climate, and attaining equitable outcomes. It provides teams the opportunity to examine practices and policies, brings families, communities, and other stakeholders into the conversation. And teams can use rubrics to assess their personal and organizational strengths, challenges, and progress. Now, up on the screen, all right, and this is kind of conveniently available and accessible, is the construct engaging in self-reflection and growth, which is part of our year-one plan. As a team or individually, as we scroll down, you will see that each aspect of the construct can be assessed and can be clicked on. Also, there's an opportunity for you to provide evidence, to support reasoning, as well as, you know, kind of get an idea of where we stand as a whole. These responses are organized into a report, and we do recommend that you use an equity team member email, so we can compile and use the info. But it's a very valuable data source that we can use as we go through this equity process. Excuse me.
Thank you. At this point, you might be asking, well, what have you done so far? So, I'd like to remind you of what Dr. Womack mentioned, that this started in Roots Town, Ohio. Dr. Dixon, Ms. Gould, Mr. Womack, Shawn Washington, and myself attended the Institute for Social Justice Training from June 15th to June 17th. After that, we met as a team to discuss our next steps and plan implementation district-wide for our district. So far to date, the following groups of people have been trained in our identity model. Our media ancillaries, also known as librarians, but in elementary, we call them media ancillaries. Our ALC members, also known as in-school suspension leads. All building leadership team members, K through 12, have been trained. All security monitors have been trained. Roxboro Middle School took one of their professional days to train their staff, a half-day, along with Noble Elementary School. At this point, we are reflecting on the feedback that we have been giving and designing and implementing our next steps, and we would like to use the LEED tool constructs to continue that work.
And I'd like to just weigh in on the school culture and what we've been able to witness. You all experienced one of the activities, and there was a lightness to that experience. You laughed, and despite the heaviness of the work, we are seeing an openness, an opportunity to build new bonds within staff. And so, that does improve the school culture.
At this point, we would like to walk you through our five-year plan, and we have put it together in two ways. For those of you who may not be visual learners, we have put it together this way. I am a visual learner, so I'm also going to walk you through a colorful chart. It's pretty cool. But we have one here, year one, two, three, four, and five, and we've included at least two constructs that go along with the LEED tool. When we speak to years, we simply mean the year of implementation, and not that the step has been carried out all the way, but it's the year that it started. So, if we go to the next slide, I'll show you how the chart works in front of you. So, we wanted to try to put our work together for five years and leave it on one page. There are 10 constructs. So, wherever you see a yellow, that is year-one implementation. That's work that we've done this year, started this year. If there's a blue action step, that's for next year, 17, 18. Orange is 18, 19. Green is 19, 20. And purple is 20, 21. So, what we, you have in front of you is where we are and where we would like to go. This year, I'll just mention this year, what we've done in engaging in self-reflection and growth for equity. We trained, we started to train our entire staff in the area of identity. And we're also, all principals receive equity training, so we make sure that we've done that. As we go out through the evening, if you continue to look at the chart, we'll be able to answer any questions that you may have about it.
We did not purposely include constructs for year four and five, because we understood that, you know, we needed to reevaluate the work prior to maybe making those goals. Although, if you go back to the previous slide, you'll see that we have kinds of forecasted that year four would be developing organizational leadership for equity, as well as influencing the socio-political context. In addition to that, I'd like to say that although there are only two constructs listed for each year, it does involve all 10 constructs, so we just didn't list them all there for just the purpose of not cluttering up the slide.
And in closing, we would like to just share with you what it looks like from a staff member, intern, a classroom, to a community member slash parent, to a building administrator.
One of the things that we've done particularly, and you've heard throughout the evening so far, is that our objective was to embed the LEED tool within our work. As a staff person, we wanted to make sure that we were including the self-reflection, identity piece, so that it would carry out through the classroom usage. What it looks like for us is going through this self-reflection, understanding how mental mindsets go into how we as students, and answering questions, and preparing our staff for those courageous conversations that we know are actually happening and coming up down the line. In addition to that, we want to prepare our staff in year two, if you can, actually, year three, where you'll see lesson plan training that we intend to have to help develop culturally relevant pedagogy within our curriculum. And that comes down in year three. So, that's particularly what we're looking for, for staff, for teaching staff.
And from a community and parent standpoint, if you notice in the blue block, we talk about engaging valuable stakeholders, which is our families and parents, and community partners. It's in accordance with our strategic plan, goal three. The Equity Task Force will begin to have those conversations, and we've already started. This spring, our parent groups will, have already been surveyed to see if they have an interest in this kind of work, and that's been favorable. And goal three specifically states that there will be efforts made to strengthen connections and the learning opportunities amongst our families. And this equity work is a strong reach-in, because it demonstrates the value and contributions of culture. It is timely in sharing the same knowledge and professional progress our staff is undergoing. And it enables the community at large to understand how and why certain decisions are made.
And as an administrator, to ensure that this work does not get lost amongst all of the other things that we do, we would be suggesting that each building level, we have a building-level action plan that they include an equity goal. But not only the buildings, we would also like central office and cabinet members to include an equity goal as well. What would be different about this goal is that we would actually take next year to help the different teams create that goal. And so, they would have a year to actually understand the importance of the work and create the goal, and then year three, they would actually carry that goal out.
And we would always reflect back to the LEED tool as a purpose of assessing where we are, and how we can address the work and make adjustments in the work that we do, and the training that we get, and the training that we also provide.
Therein, our presentation. Time for question and answers in regards to the LEED tool itself, the five-year plan. And thank you to my equity team leaders for your presentation today. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, the way that you're sort of measuring the performance is really, as I'm looking at sort of like the LEED tool and all the various things. So, if we're getting more things under exemplary, that means your work is succeeding? So, the goal is really to be exemplary in all these essentially facets? So, okay, so as, you know, just sort of seeing how you're measuring culture and, you know, from accountability perspective, as a board member, you'll be able to then share with us on a regular basis, okay, well, we're blue, blue here, but we got a couple yellows, yay. And then, you know, a year comes from now, we'll be able to say, oh, you got more yellows, bigger yay. Okay.
The tool will also...
Say that again.
Do I have to?
We will also receive, we also have resources that allow us to be able to, like, if we're not in the yellow area, what can we do to get there? So, using the LEED tool also gives us suggestions on how we can approve to get to the yellow area as well.
Well, I guess I wanted you to say it again, so I could get to the same point. We got a lot of colors. So, you, yellow is exemplary?
On the LEED tool.
An LEED tool.
Oh, that's yellow.
Yeah, the letters.
Okay, that's confusing me a little bit, because I haven't seen it.
Not the yellow on the chart.
That's first year.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that's...
The yellowish.
Okay. Yellowish, okay.
So, are there specific, I mean, besides the tool, are there specific operational things that this team has earmarked that need to be improved? I mean, maybe low-hanging fruit issues? And how do you report out on those?
So, I'll take that. So, one of the things that has come up is qualitative versus quantitative. And so, Cleveland Heights University High School District started this work well before I became a part of the school district, or Dr. Dixon, by being one of the founding members of Minority Student Achievement Network, as well as the work they've done on equity. And so, we have a lot of quantifiable data in order to look at gap closing, which is part of strategic plan goal number two. We have information on behavior disproportionality. There was an assessment done in the district in 2014. So, what we're trying to do is look at a qualitative tool that provides us resources that aligns with what we've adopted as an equity policy. Part of the policy that we adopted as a district here in Cleveland Heights was based on work in Portland, Oregon. The same people who put that work together in regards to the framework for that policy are also the same people who put together this LEED tool. So, therefore, we have a way of looking at that policy, as well as trying to find ways that align with a tool, a LEED tool, Leadership Equity Assessment and Development Tool, to help us assess the progress. The good part about it is it's embedded in the tool itself. So, when people take it at the beginning of the year, they may find themselves at little or no equitable practices. But throughout the work, which we're doing on self-identity, and there's three parts to that work. There is the identity work, there's the stereotype threats, and there's the history of marginalization. Once we begin to get through those processes with all of the stakeholders, and we're trying to do that strategically with focus, then we're able to go back to this tool to see if that work has actually made a difference. So, we'll have quantifiable data based on what we have statistically speaking. Improvement in the EOS program in regards to the number of students who are in the advanced placement classes. We should see decreases in disproportionality in regards to the students that are being suspended or falling into special education status. That information is with Ms. Burr, and we will always look at that, because that is part of strategic plan goal number two, closing the achievement gaps. So, we'll look at both.
Yeah, but it seems to me that it's that last item that the community gets. I mean, when I go out and I sort of talk about what I refer to as, and I don't want to say it's like the AP problem, but the more kids we can get into our AP class, classes, the better. I mean, for a whole host of reasons. And the success that you guys have, has had as a team to do that is just phenomenal and exciting. And that's, you know, that's what I like to be able to talk about. As a board member, okay, this is a selfish board member, you know, sort of. But, I mean, it's those kinds of things, I think, are meaningful to the community. Just like MSAN and how important that is, you get more kids involved in that program, boy, I mean, I think that's just, I mean, those are just home runs.
And I think to add to what was stated, now we have something, as Sandy stated, to quantify it. So, now, we're just not piecemealing it. And not only we look at, and we're looking at our students-based programs, but we're looking at our own practices in central office. So, when we're looking at, you know, what, how are we allocating resources to our schools? Staff, you know, how are we allocating our staff? That's an issue of equity, too. Do we have more senior staffs at our schools where most needs are not? You know, and funding, looking at Scott, how are we allocating our funding? And so, all of those things, now, we have a tool to actually test us and kind of allow us to push back and say, what are we doing? Are we really, as those words that were stated, you know, do we have a plan? You know, what is guiding the work? Are we making it a central focus? And kudos to the community, because I believe the community helped us make it a focus. And we think about the strategic plan and the work of the community saying that you have to place equity front and center. And we have it as a equity goal. The board, you came back and you adopted an equity policy, and now we have a tool to say, how are we guiding our work? And are these things being done? And then, as you stated, Jim, how do we communicate this out to the community? And I think that's where, you know, Scott Wortman comes in, and again, helping us to make sure that we're communicating the work. And kudos to the team again, saying that it's not work that happens overnight, and we know that it's going to be a process, and we're committed to the process and committed to improving in all areas. So, good.
Well, I'm trying to get to this grading system, so I can, I have to be careful about these colors. Just in terms of looking at these 10 areas, I get, what do you call them, areas?
Constructs.
Constructs. We are able to take any one of these constructs and put us somewhere on this tool.
That's what they did on, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, Alex team. I'm sorry, Alex team, sorry.
Do you mean assessing, as far as we would be able to assess ourselves, where we sit with the constructs or alignment to the Board of Education?
Well, yeah, I want to go beyond the alignment. The question I have has to do with the data. If we're gonna take number six, fostering equitable school culture, and we look at this tool, then we're somewhere on this tool.
Yes.
Right. And so, in order for us to establish ourselves, we have to have data to support how we grade ourselves, or how we say where we are, right? So, that's the question that I'm really asking. To what extent, okay, I don't, I don't want to push this too hard, but I do want to push it a little bit. It seems to me that from a board standpoint, what I would want to know is if we look at the constructs, where are we on these constructs, and what is the evidence that we're wherever we say we are?
So, before we looked at this tool to make the suggestion for adopting it as a district, one of the things that we did is do a self-assessment collectively as a group. And almost everything that we saw on here, other than engaging in self-reflection, equity for growth, we found ourselves close to emerging practices, because we're really, as a team, just starting this work. We had quantifiable data in order to say, we've seen increases in regards to equal-opportunity schools and student enrollment in AP classes. We had data to suggest to some schools, we saw fewer suspensions in regards to students and proportionality. But when you look at a lot of the information here, a lot of this is quantitative, excuse me, qualitative. And so, therefore, it's a feeling or a perception, which is why we start off with mental mindsets and your beliefs. So, we're starting off with the belief work in order to set the foundation, so therefore, we can start looking at these numbers and how our beliefs and perceptions impact that. But we should be able to quantify it, Mr. Register, based on all the data we're collecting on gap closing, and also where we're allocating resources.
Yeah, and I guess the point that I'm making is that ultimately, we would want to be able to, not, the way we, the way I think we as board members really talk about this is not so much about the tool, but the things that we can talk about, the data, like when Jim says that it's a good work that we've got so many more students in AP classes. That's something that we can quantify. So, when we see quantity, then we can, you know, we'll remember some of it. We won't remember all the twos and the colors. We won't remember all the twos and the colors, whether it's, what do you call this? Gold ride or something, or yellow or whatever. So I, we might not remember the color, but we can definitely- Yeah, we can definitely talk about the data that we hear, even when it's qualitative.
Yeah, we have to quantify.
Right.
Right.
I mean, well, I'm not saying, I'm saying qualitative data works, too.
Yes.
For me.
Right.
And I think it'll work, and, you know, as we talk in the community, it works, too.
Agreed.
They'll want to see that.
The one thing that I-
So we'll do mixed methods.
Yeah, but I'm saying that at some point, we would want to see that. The one thing that I looked at was this sociopolitical context. I did, it's important. And I see, I guess there's one question that I want to, and it's throughout this. How do we think about leadership? Is leadership you guys? Or are we leadership? Who's, it said, leadership does not have, and then it says, leadership engages. Who's leadership? Who are we talking about?
That a little bit, when we were putting our plan together, we actually had a big discussion about, when you say the word leader, who are you speaking about in the school? And the truth is, you want all of your staff members to be leaders in this work, because nobody can be left behind in this. Everyone has to be very open to where they are in the room. We discussed on a practical basis that your building leadership teams and your TAP teams would come together and use this tool at each building and say, where are we as a building? And then those people carry it out into the classrooms, understanding that each building has its own pulse and its own culture, and some buildings may be further up the scope, going towards exemplary, or some may be emerging. So when we speak of building leaders, it would, you could look at the teams that are already established in the school. But eventually, you would want to be able to look at all of your staff members as leaders in this work.
Yeah, and I was, from my standpoint, I wasn't there, but I heard about it. When we looked at the state of the schools address, it's the kind of thing that I think, I mean, the piece that we shared, the layout, I mean, all of that was right on target. And I think that ultimately, when we think about the geo-, the sociopolitical context, there is work that we have to do at that level. And part of that work probably falls on the shoulders of the board.
Absolutely.
And so, really, I just thought I'd throw that in there.
We actually, if you, when you have an opportunity to look at all the pretty colors, that's actually why we put in our five-year plan the idea of making sure that we walk through, do some of the work with you guys as well, because we know that you are, when you read influencing sociopolitical contexts, it screams board. So we understood that that needed to be work that we did collaboration.
So, and my thinking, too, is that there are parent leaders, whether it's our PTA leaders or our parent ambassadors, or people who are sort of in the community that step up and do some of the work to influence.
Right. And I think, you know, one of the pieces that we have, and certainly Dr. Dixon has talked about, is this whole collaboration. So as we think about collaboration, it's not just us within the confines of the district, all the way up to board. But ultimately, see, these other people have to collaborate with us, too. And so as we, as we move forward, our strategies have to reflect that. And that means that we might be having, you know, like right now, and I guess Eric is as big as anything, anybody on this, in terms of meeting with other political entities in the neighborhood, that I could see that we get to the point where those conversations that we have in joint meetings might begin to look a little bit different than what they look like now.
Well, I have to say, I'm very excited that the board have adopted an equity policy, and I'm excited about the work that the team is going to be doing. And, I mean, how do we come up with the team, Dr. Dixon? Or Dr. Womack?
It was a combination. We sat down and went to a training this summer at the Social Justice Institute. We were given that information from the state support team, Jessica, Chris, and the members of-
And they're here.
Right, thank you for coming out. They came out today. And as a result, some of our district administrators attended. And then, once we came back, we sent out invites to different members who we thought might be, might do a great job with it. Some people accepted it, other people didn't. What you have is not a tap day situation, these are the people who accepted the call. And they have been putting on this work and doing a tremendous job, because you're right, the work is not easy. It makes people look at their own perceptions and beliefs, and, but it's ongoing.
Thank you.
So, now that you're on it, can, Cal?
No, I'm just talking.
Eric?
What?
Can you say a little bit more about the Social Justice Institute and their work?
So, the Social Justice Institute was information that we received from the ESC. And they provided us training with Elise Futura, Katie Novak, some of the top trainers in the area, from the Wisconsin area, who came in and talked about universal design for learning, starting to look at our disproportionality in regards to students, in regards to classes, how we separate students out. And it was just an intense three days. And they provided us with a lot of different things to think about ourselves. And it was ongoing work, so the work didn't stop. The blessing was, we were able to find a tool that aligned with our strategic plan, but that social justice work is ongoing work. The Educational Service Center continues to provide resources and trainings for us. We've gone to, how many trainings thus far this year?
Six.
Six.
Yeah, and so they have been very instrumental in training our staff, so that therefore, when we come back, we can do maybe a train-to-trainer model, so we're able to implement this work. But it's been, it's been critical to what we've been able to do. Plus, another group from North Colacamis School District provided a equity resource like I've never seen before in my life. There are tons of different resources, from articles to videos to presentations that we've been able to use. And we've been focusing on basically the work from the Social Justice Institute, because that's our foundation. But it also helps us to align with the information we have from NCSD as well.
But I'd also like to add that we had an advantage, because we were already had an equity goal. So when we were contacted by this group, we said, you know, we, you know, we sat at the meeting and said, we, okay, we're here. You know, we ready to work. You don't have to prod and get us involved. And again, to go back to the work the district had already done with M-SAN. So there's been a lot of equity work that has happened in the district for quite some time. I believe the goal and the policy really allowed us to put a systemic approach in place in the district. And so, and it really allowed us, again, put it front and center and say, this is a goal. We're gonna focus on it, we're going to tackle it, we're gonna, but we're gonna do it with a plan. We're not gonna do it in a disjointed way. We have a team that's leading it, a team that's respected by their peers and respected in the district. And as they stated, it's not easy. I've gone through one of their sessions, and it was, it was difficult, because you really have to have some tough conversations. And just real quick, there was an activity, I had to sit with Patrick McNichols, and it was just, talk to your partner about how your, your name. And, you know, where did your name come from? And so I'm sitting with Patrick, and Patrick's giving me all the history of his name. And he said, you know, Talisa, why'd they name you Talisa? And I said, I'm not, I'm not sure. So he said, you need to have a conversation with your dad. So I said, you're right. So I called my dad, and I said, you know, Dad, we had to do this activity. And I had to tell him, how, why did you guys name me Talisa? And he started laughing, he said, well, we named Thomas, the oldest, after your grandfather, Tom. And I said, okay, how'd you get to Talisa? He started laughing, he said, I don't know, baby, but we love you. So I said, well, I have to go back and tell him something. But, you know, I'm thinking, all this time, I thought there was a reason I was named Talisa. So it was those activities that you're sitting with someone, and you're asking, you know, about just something as simple as your name. So I thought it was pretty powerful, and there was some other conversations, but it made you think and go back and have other conversations just based on, you know, and Patrick just said, oh, just go ask your dad and find out. And I thought it would be something easy, I'm gonna get this whole history. And he said, you know, I don't know, but we love you. So I think for the team, that this, I think that even the room, that the setting was inviting, and everyone, as Rachel always said, this safe space. They created a safe space to start having some different conversations, because we recognized when it became a goal, that it's something that we needed to address in our district, and it was unique to our district. So I appreciate the approach, because the approach should be unique. And we should take our time with our staff and our public about how we approach this work, because we want it to be lasting work, not something that we do to people, but something that we do with people. And I think that's the biggest change in how we make the impact of our culture. Eric want to say something?
No.
Anybody?
Could you?
Yeah.
Who wanted to?
First, I just, to make you feel better about the Talisa story, my wife used to deliver babies, and she decided that it wasn't a good idea to use things that come to mind when she delivered twins and they wanted to name them Placebo and Placenta. And that's a true story, by the way. So first, thank you very much. Yeah, I think having an equity policy in place is huge. I think the structure you're trying to put into it is great. It's absolutely true for this old people, we've been doing, we've been trying to get a handle on equity for a long time. I think that for a long time, we have understood the difference between equity and equality, maybe before we put into words, and I'm glad to see we're trying to put into practice. I did have a couple questions. These are challenging conversations, and these are difficult things to handle. How do you feel about buy-in from the staff in general? And how to, how to create that capacity for buy-in across? Because you're challenging people, you're, in some cases, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, but you may be telling people, look, if you look at what you're doing, this is not equity. And they may not see that. So help me with, how do you address that?
Teachers?
Start with teachers?
Yeah.
Well, even with the mental mindset, like, like, I know me and Melissa and Max, we did it with our students, probably Sean also. To be aware that you saw the word, many of them raised their hand when they saw the words, or didn't see the word sleep, but they raised their hand because they thought they did. Having those kind of communication that maybe the way we've been thinking, we need to rethink. And, I lost my train of thought, by the way.
I think, I think one thing you'll notice when, if you, and you're all invited to our trainings, though, it makes it a little awkward when we just have watchers, because we are trying to create that safe space. I think you'd be surprised, or I was surprised, maybe I should speak for myself. When people are assigned to come to the trainings, and I think they have maybe a preconceived idea of what it's going to be like, like, oh, my God, diversity training. But I think they come, and I think after that initial idea about the mental mindsets, and I think when we get them just talking to each other, and we start with talking about their names, it becomes a different vibe in the room. Because we don't just start with, you know, hey, you know, what you're doing is kind of wrong. We start by really this idea of get them self-reflecting. Because we can't get to the place we want to be unless they're realizing that themselves. So I think that they enjoy it. I would say that by the end of the trainings, people feel more comfortable with each other. And we do have some pictures in the presentations, and I think they're indicative of how people feel. During the presentation, it is enjoyable, there's a lot of laughter. While the conversations are difficult, there is a lot of opportunity for just us to be human and see each other as human and get to know each other better. I think the trainings, for the most part, are enjoyable. Some parts of them are difficult conversations. But because we've worked to kind of create that safe space, I think that it gets there. But again, the idea is, they would go through multiple trainings.
Yeah.
So that first one is just that idea of, let's get to know you and reflect on who you are, and then let's take it to the next level. And at the next level, we start to get, it gets a little more complicated.
Can we talk about the norms, too? Just a little bit about those? Because we have an agreement that the work is ongoing. There's no shame or blame. We're not going to solve it today. So we go into it knowing it's a process. And people seem to buy into it. And I think, just what Melissa said, there's a lightness to it. I mean, you really feel that, even though it's heavy content, that there's laughter and that there's relationship building. And I think that helps.
I think, too, and it's not always a lot of laughter in the room, which Dr. Dixon alluded to. There are heavy conversations, and we do tell people, expect to be uncomfortable and stick with being uncomfortable. Don't, don't walk out on the process or mentally close down. I know when I walked my staff through it, I was, I was surprised that there was, there were so many people that wanted to talk about who they were, and they had never got that opportunity. And there were tears about how people grew up and how that impacts them in a classroom as a teacher. And so, things that may not hit home with some people, because this person had this experience and their mental model now is geared towards that, that comes into the classroom with them. And so we have these deep conversations about, what are you bringing into the classroom? And what are you not even intentionally putting out on students about what you believe or who you are? I was amazed at how open my staff was, but there was also some periods of being uncomfortable. Even when we went through the workshop in Roots Town, I didn't know that it was going to get that deep, even though they had warned us. But I had no idea how deep in three days you could start peeling the layers back to find out who you are. And the work that we do is so important, because a teacher impacts kids. You have thirty people sitting there, so if you're not aware of your identity and what you bring to the table, you could unintentionally be harming someone and not know it.
True.
And that's the thing, it gave, you know, our, the teachers that we worked with and, you know, other staff members, it gave them tools to walk away with and kind of use in their own classrooms and connect with their students in ways that maybe they hadn't before and get a, you know, gain a deeper understanding, you know, about who they are and where they come from. And, you know, it just creates a better environment for learning as a whole.
I'm sorry. And what we foresee also is help for lesson planning, help for teachers in the classroom particularly, how we can go about making sure that we are not just self-reflecting, but it's impacting the way that we are struck. So that's part of the five-year plan, part of what we want to do, so that we are very cognizant of the work and how that impacts children.
Okay, so then, in terms of leadership, and I think it was you, Ms. Iverson, Mrs. Coleman, who-
Monocello days, okay.
I know, that's right.
Who mentioned, you know, administration and staff at all levels. But, so I guess I have two other groups to put into that, and Lisa sort of talked a little bit about it with, if you're considering training for parents and maybe other community members. But maybe more important to me, no, definitely more important to me, is did you, have you thought about what leadership roles students can play in the design of the program? So one of the things I liked best about what you presented tonight was what you didn't do, and that was you didn't design yours four and five. And I think that was a really clever idea on your part. Because I think sometimes you, it forces you into a mold that you're not ready for yet. So what about those two things I brought up, student and not-
So I'll just talk about, the hope is to get our parent leader groups aligned and feeling collaborative and cohesive. So on June third, we're having Ohio PTA come in and do some formal training for our PTAs. But in addition to that, I'm inviting other parent leaders to have some conversation and to build cohesive practices. It's a day that's not fully designed, but I think, again, to see what happens, to listen, to have an opportunity for those parents to come together. I simply asked on the survey to gauge interest, in the hopes that as we implement this, there will be an opportunity to engage our parent groups and give them the opportunity to have the same experience, because it is powerful. I can't really speak to the student piece of it, I don't know if anybody's-
I think that was part of our reason for putting an equity goal on each building-level action plan, so that you can include the students in the work. Understanding that elementary work will look a lot different from high school work, because those students are much more conscious of who they are at that point. But just getting away from, oh, I'm gonna have a multicultural potluck, and now we have equity in the building. Because we know that that's not true. But really, having a team member sit down and, and yes, we've all talked about, does your students see themselves represented in your classroom? Well, just because you put a poster up of an African-American child, doesn't mean that I'm represented in the room. So that work at elementary may look like, what do your lesson plans look like? Am I able to see myself as a student in the books that I'm reading, in the conversations that we're having in the classroom? And not that that means that you're talking about poverty, that you do have African-American students who come from affluent homes in this community. And so we need to expand our thinking on that. And at middle school and high school, I'm sure that it would look different.
Right, and again, I mean, I think also having them as leaders- And again, I mean, I think also having them as leaders in the design of the programs, while not just recipients. Okay, so then the last thing is, is a tiny bit controversial, I suppose. But also, I'll throw it in with a nice story about a teacher from your school, Ms. Iverson, Mrs. Coleman.
My husband isn't here.
Don't tell. So, so there was a teacher in your building years back, who, actually, it was, it was an eye-opening experience for me, who had a, a parent who would never come to parent-teacher conferences. And her, the child was suffering, and, and she was very frustrated by that whole thing, and, and couldn't believe that a parent wouldn't come for teachers' conferences. And she kept, she, she was dogmatic, she went after this person, said, you've got to come. And the person came, and she's, she, they had an appointment, she didn't show up in the room, and the teacher was pretty upset. And she looked out the window, and the parent's standing outside. And she walked outside and said, why aren't you coming in? She said, because she had had such a bad experience of her own in school, that she was afraid of coming into the building. So I'm going to tell you straight out for me, never would cross my mind, never crossed my mind to be afraid of walking into a building. And she took, God bless her, she took her, two chairs, put them outside, and they had their conference outside. So that, I mean, I think it's a great example of something that most of us probably don't have that same feeling. Maybe some do, and I'm not really asking. But let's go back to the opening thing you did, with the sleep, where, where some of us said, sleep. I, I, I like the idea of putting structure to this, and trying to have some sort of tool that you can use. But I, I want to challenge you not to be encumbered by the tool. So again, I'm going to, here's the controversial part. A, a parent sent me an article about AP exam, about AP courses, that, and there is a body of evidence, and again, whether you believe or not, it's just a body of evidence, that suggests that AP is a scam. That, that is perpetrated by the college board. And, and so, so is it, is it really a great measure to say, how many kids do we have in AP classes? What does that mean? Does it, what it means to me, is it means that somehow, we've come to some conclusion that AP classes are better than other classes. Well, why is that? Should they be better than other classes? Should we be looking at, why aren't the other classes every bit as desirable, and, and giving everything else? And did we look longitudinally at, what happens to those students once they go to school? How much more successful they are? So again, I'm not pushing into that at this moment. But I would argue that we need to be extremely careful about what we use to judge the efficacy of what we're doing in terms of the, from an equity standpoint. And so I do, I actually like the qualitative part. I, I, as much as that's, I'm the engineer who should want quantitative, I like qualitative. I, I really like the idea of treating everyone as individuals, and recognizing that you're, as much as you want to create these baskets, and want to have something that can show, that we can tell the community, so the community can be happy, I think sometimes you got to say, you know what? Let's look a little farther, let's look the next step down. We're, we're going to do just a little bit better than, than other people do. So I'm going to just challenge you along those lines. And in no ways to undermine what you've done so far, to suggest that you're not doing the right thing. Just, I challenge you to not be encumbered by the tool that you choose. That's, that's what. There you go, Ron.
Well, I was just trying, I was waiting to hear the controversial part.
Okay.
I, but that's okay.
All right, I, I just said the AP.
No, 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 I, I heard what you said. Just, I think this is great. One of the things that I think, Melissa, that you said that I was identified with, and I think what you said is something to the effect that you can come to the training, or something like, like, was that you? Did you say that?
Maybe.
And so the, the training and professional development, for me, is always front and center. Because I don't think we necessarily, no matter how many degrees or master certification, I'm sorry, Joyce, but you're a master teacher, aren't you?
Yes.
Yeah. I, I mean, I didn't, I didn't want to be stepping on your toes. But, 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 but there is still a coming to the situation, needing to learn more, in my opinion. So professional development, huge for me. So I think about, what does, what, as we think about, you know, we talked about training parents, we have an invitation to come to the training, and that kind of thing. I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about the training, and at what point would it make sense for us as board members, if we were interested in seeing more of it, or understanding it better? What makes sense?
What could that look like?
It's actually on the plan to train the board. Because you, as the community members, you would need to be able to speak to this work. I just speak from a teacher's standpoint, when I taught in a district. We, we knew that there were issues with equity, but there was no place for us to talk about it. And it definitely wasn't something that you would do freely, because there was no policy to talk about equity. So you would notice that some schools had things that your school didn't have, but you didn't really know why, or who to ask about that. With this, we looked at the five-year plan, we, we really saw the board going through the entire training, so that you would know exactly where you stood as a board member, and what you bring to the table as a decision-maker, and as someone who can make change in this district. So to leave you out of it would almost be, it would probably be the biggest mistake that, that we could make. I know, once we do the trainees, there are so many people who want more of the training. Mr. Womack did a PD in his class, the history of mobilization, it was packed. And so that is in our, one of our action steps, to make sure that the board is included in that training process. Because we always say, don't leave out and say, oh, I did equity. Well, no, you didn't, because it's ongoing work, and it should be actually lifelong work.
It's blue, Ron.
Yeah, I see it's blue. But let me say, I see it's blue. But, but, but let me tell you.
You need to go to your eye doctor.
I don't understand these colors yet. So I'm still, I'm still working on the colors. I think the first thing that you guys are going to have to do, is give me a lesson on colors.
Eye doctor. You need to go to your eye doctor.
We're going to be, we're going to be.
No, 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 that's not the reason I don't understand them.
So actually, it's, it's year two for us to train you guys.
Okay.
So whenever, Dr. Dixon will let us know when the training will take place.
You know, I wasn't going to say anymore about the colors, but since he called me out, I'm going to say it. You know, when I look at the top, I got yellow year one, blue year two. Is that another yellow?
It's orange.
Orange, okay, that's orange. That's, that's not the same color as.
It's more like a.
Right.
Well, it's off.
But, but, and green, and then that's purple, right?
Yeah.
So, and then I look across, I got some yellow all the way across in year five.
In construct.
Yes.
Right. So I, I don't quite understand the colors yet, that's what I mean, I don't understand.
Constructs, yeah, so I can explain it one more time. So there's two, there's ten constructs, and so we didn't want to put ten colors on a page. So we just broke down the years. So every time there's a yellow, that's year one implementation, and you just look up to see, well, what construct does it fit up under?
Constructs are going horizontally across the.
Right. So if you look at the last one, Supervising for Improvement of Equitable Instruction, that's the construct. And right up under it, year one, what we've done is all principals receive equity training.
Okay, I see. So we got all the constructs going here.
Right.
So we could have had that thing at the top, could have been at the bottom with the color code.
It would have just been two minute year.
Okay.
We wanted to get it on one page.
Now, now we can go to numbers.
He was thinking you didn't want him trained until year five.
Oh, no.
The way, if you follow it down, so I didn't want him to say that, say year five. So don't say year five, we'll just get it, okay.
Trying to make you see how much easier this is going to be for you, with the other people on the board.
This is good, so it's year two, okay.
Okay. Well, again, for the sake of colorblind people like myself.
You admit it.
I would put the code somewhere other than at the top of the page.
This is good.
Thank you.
This is good. Thank you.
Excellent.
Anything else? All right.
Thank you.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second. Mr. Gaynor.
Mr. Bosch. Yes. Mr. Register.
Yes.
Mr. Silverman.
Yes.
That's right.
Yes.
Mr. Zerber.
Yes.